Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski. Alderman Artwoods.
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here, I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergathered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a crowd tonight? Okay, first I need a motion to approve the minutes of May 16, 2024. I'll make the motion. Yes. Any comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Let carries? Do we have some citizens that wish to be heard this evening? We will start with Amelia. Amelia? You can go to the podium.
Yes. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Amelia, and I live on Montclair Lane together with my family. They're right there, the little one and my husband. So, we've been living there for six years now. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, it's my first time. English is not my first language, as you can probably already tell by my accent and everything, but I'm gonna do my best, and if anything is unclear, please let me know, I'm happy to explain. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family about the annual moth spraying that takes place in our zones. There's three currently, and we live in a second one, I believe. We are under Ward 1. And I would like to ask you to step into my shoes for a couple of minutes as I'm speaking. I'm the mom of a little one there, and I believe some of you are parents too. The sprays have been taking place early in the morning around 6:00 a.m., as I could still hear the helicopter when I was getting ready for work on to style my day with my family. This year it was different. This year, the helicopter came for the first application on the May 31st at 10:00 a.m. I was outside together with my daughter, playing in our backyard. At the time, my father-in-law, my husband's dad, her grandpa, came over to help with cutting the grass. He is just such a sweetheart, we love him so much. So, we were all outside, didn't expect anything, thinking the spraying is already done early in the morning, as it was stated on the City of Wooddale website and Facebook site as well, that the spraying would have occurred around 5:00 a.m. So, we didn't really expect it anymore, because it was 10:00 a.m. I just thought we didn't hear it. Then we heard the helicopter. We didn't think much of it, as we live close to O'Hare Airport, but the sound persisted, and we looked up and spotted a helicopter with these giant rods and atomizer spraying. So, I just grabbed my daughter and yelled at my dad and be like, "We gotta hide inside because they're spraying right now." I am very thankful we were at the time around our backyard, we can actually hide, because everywhere like outside walking, or if I took her to a playground, would be no hiding. It's like you have no really time to react. So, the next day after that spraying, it was Saturday, we had this giant heavy rain. So, the next day was Sunday, and the helicopter came again. We didn't get any notification, and I get it, because yeah, it was a little bit unexpected because of the rain, so they reapplied the spraying again. Yeah, and we had breakfast at the time, it was 11:00 a.m. I mean, I should say brunch. So, they were reapplying the sprays again, and we looked out the windows. I took a couple pictures, if anyone would like to see, of the helicopter, and there was also a lady walking with a baby in a stroller, it was an infant, she was so confused, she didn't know what was going on. So, I thought, maybe I missed something. I went on the Facebook of City of Wooddale to check for warnings, I checked my email on my phone, and there was nothing, so no warning. I just thought I missed it, but I didn't. People were outside, enjoying their beautiful Sunday morning, together with their families and pets, being on walks, riding bikes, working in yards, and I bet there were kids on the playgrounds. I am upset, because there was no communication from either of City of Wooddale nor the contractor, Clark itself. We were aware of the three layers of information, the 911 reverse calling, the Clark call list, and the letter from Wooddale we got, we get it every year, but it says that the spraying would occur only late May, early June, in early morning hours. That is very vague. We need more exact information. Should we all just, who live in the treatment area, be hiding in our homes for like two weeks to like hearing if the helicopter is coming? Should we just? I'm just not sure. I'm signed up for everything I mentioned before, and I also double-checked if my info is correct. It is, I have, like, I'm not sure if any of you have tried calling Clark, the contractor. It's like impossible to actually get a hold of an actual representative, not a computer. It's like just endless fights with the numbers you need to pick, and you just can't get a real person to talk to. So, I really encourage you to try calling them on our behalf, to try how it is from our stand. So, I would please ask you to make them more accountable, to actually take care when they come. So, since you hired them with our tax money, please make sure we know when they're gonna treat the area. I want to be able to take precautions and stay home with my family, and be able to hide my daughter's toys, her water table, the chalk she uses to drown the driver before the spraying takes place. I understand the spraying is heavily dependent on weather conditions and approval from the airport, but there must be a way of notifying us more effectively. We must know, no one should not be surprised by it. Please help me understand the whole process. So, those are my questions to the council. How does the contract with the contractor, the Clark, works? Does the city get notified about the spraying the day of, like the day in advance? Does the city know exact time, and so far, and how far in advance?
So, we have answers for that.
Okay. And how is it determined what areas, what zones are sprayed? What, is it like research done, like there's certain, I would like to know?
Yes.
How is it decided that those zones needs to be sprayed, not any other ones? Could we even maybe think of different treatments? Because I understand that prevention is very important to save the trees. And when it comes to notifying the residents, we're all aware of the zones and all the things I mentioned earlier, there just must be a better way of communication. Like maybe street signs, or the sign on the clock tower? Or sign, texts, messages, emails. Also, please be aware, Clark online notification portal, that we can't get hold of the representative. So, I went online, and there's a portal you can log in, and it gives you only option to opt out of mosquito spraying, but it doesn't say anything about moths. I mean, at least then you can't opt out of the spraying, because it's like, "So, how are you in the helicopter?" But still, it doesn't give you an option to get notified about the sprays for moths. I understand it's not up to you, but the contractor, maybe it's time to change the contractor or put a new hiring. And it's also deemed that the spraying agent 4A48B, they use low toxicity, yet it is banned to use in Norway and Denmark. There was research done called symptom complaints following aerial spraying with biological insecticide 4A48B, which is what they use. Which concludes in all, and I'm siding now, with the research says, aerial spraying with 4A48B is associated with some adverse health consequences in terms of significant increases in upper airway, gastrointestinal, and neurophysiatric symptoms, as well as a reduction in overall perception of health in exposed population. I'm happy to share with your source, if anyone would like to see it. So, I'm also an hobbyist gardener, and last year we got the notification, it was actually accurate. I forgot to cover my garden, veggie garden, and three days, we had a good amount of like these swallowtail butterflies, caterpillars, and they all died within three days. So, it does really affect our plants and our insects that are very beneficial. I believe protecting our trees is important, but there must be a better way. I'm thankful my family is healthy, but some of us residents are heavily disabled, and those treatments are hard on them. As a conclusion, I ask you once again to please make sure we are notified in advance, so we can just take the necessary precautions when the spraying takes place. I don't want to be afraid to spend time outside with my family and be sprayed with those chemicals, and I hope you would neither, so, thank you.
Thank you. And just so, we know there was a problem, we were, unfortunately, we found out late, and then some other problems, but we knew people were calling in, so we do have somebody here from Clark.
Oh.
Here, that can talk to the residents.
Okay.
I know there's a couple mistakes that should have never happened. And she's here, that's why we've called her in. If there's any other residents, I know I have one other card who'd like to speak on this, so if you'd like to say something, and then we'll let Ms. Emily Kluger, we'll set her up in the kitchen over there.
Hello, my name is Peter Wong, I live at 181 Cary Trail with my girlfriend Monica. She is extremely sensitive to chemicals and cannot come to meetings like this because of her health. Also because of her health, we are very sensitive to when the city sprays for mosquitoes and moths. When they do so, we try to remain indoors or far away from locations where you spray. In the middle of last month, the city announced it would spray for moths the week of May 20th. It did not occur, presumably because of the helicopter or hair problems. We called the city and Clark, the company, and found that they would spray for moths Friday the 31st, and then not again for seven days. So, they sprayed for moths on Friday the 31st, but you can imagine a surprise, when we were out two days later, the following Sunday, and there's a helicopter out spraying above us. I should point out that before we saw the helicopter, Monica started having allergic reaction, and we didn't know why. My point is not whether or not we should spray for moths, or the level of toxicity of the spray, but rather the lack of communication and our inability to find out when the spraying will occur. Our communication with city and Clark, I would like to say the City of Wooddale at least answers questions and returns phone calls. Is my understanding that there is a new system that we can sign up for to get communications from the city? It's my wish that the city will make the system easier to sign up for, and to use it to notify residents of Wooddale soon, it's possible, but applications of pesticides over and around our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, would you, in the lunchroom, if you can go in there, and the residents like to speak to her? That's the young? The spongy moth. You're here for something else? For Clark, she's from Clark. Are you here for the moth spraying?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to say something? Or did you want to speak to her? You have to go to the microphone. You have to go to the microphone if you want to say something. Or you could just ask the young lady, either way. Go ahead.
So, I wanna tell you, the spray doesn't work. I live here from 2003, it's never worked. And nobody said anything about the product. What is exactly?
She's the expert.
Okay, let's go. Everybody want to know about this?
Yeah, she's willing to talk. Go ahead. Sir, sir, could you just give your name for the minute taker? For the record. Your name?
Marius.
Could you spell it? M-A-R-I-U-S-C. Yeah. Okay. Last name? Thank you. Yeah, you can go in the room and... Elle, are you going with, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Next, does everybody want to speak? All three? Okay. We'll start with Christina, since your card was first.
My name is Christina Helsper, I live on 253 Ash, Wooddale. So, we are here, my husband and neighbors, here to talk about the red problem we have in our community. It started last year, and just continue, and it's getting worse. So, for now, as we know, four homes trying to fight the red problem, but I don't think that's gonna save, you know, solve the problem, because it's so many of them, and they multiply. We see baby reds, we see little older reds, and of course, the female are pregnant. So, we do everything, we bought so many different traps, some work, some doesn't work. We putting metal sheets around our property, so they don't dig and make homes. It's cost us hundreds of dollars for the last year trying to fight the reds, and it doesn't work. It's just we see them more and more. So, the problem is that some neighbors and some people, they don't take care of their property very good, so when they have like an old shed, the red moves in, lives there, multiplies, and they spreading around the town. They running everywhere now, commercial, you could see them running at evening. We install four cameras, so we can watch them at night and try to trap them. So, we got probably like 15 reds already, and there is more. So, and we don't know where else they are. So, something has to be done, and our thinking is that city have to send letters to all the citizens in Wooddale, because some people, they don't even know the reds are there, because they roaming at night. And with our camera, we can see them. So, we know they are there, and they causing the problem. We cannot put the gardens in, we garden for 45 years, and now we cannot do it. So, I mean, reds are winning the fight with us. We don't want to be another Chicago, that they are full of reds. So, we hoping the city council come to some kind of conclusion, what can be done to stop the red's invasion, because it's invasion. And we don't know if it started last year, if it was it because they cleaned the sewers, and maybe they were living there, and because they came out from somewhere, there was no reds before. So, somehow, it has to be something done on the big scale, because four neighbors cannot take care of the red problem in the whole block. So, I'm hoping that you're really gonna try to help us, so we can live the life we lived before, and enjoy the city, otherwise, you know, if the reds move in, people's gonna move out. Nobody's want to live here. So, that's a big problem, reds are big problem. So, thank you very much, and I hope that you can come to some kind of idea that, you know, something has to be done on the big scale. We cannot take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you know, I know I told you, the city is doing, has a program, and I believe Mr. Lang said they're gonna be out tomorrow, and there is also, as part of the program, a cost share with residents, but we'll go to Beata next. Who's Beata?
Hello, I'm Beata Brick, 262 Ash. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I want to talk about a serious problem in our neighborhood, the red infestation. Reds are causing a lot of trouble, and it's time we ask the city to help us. First, let's talk about our gardens. Many of us enjoy growing flowers and vegetables, but reds are ruining this. They eat our garden's plants, destroying the hard work where we putting into making our yards beautiful and productive. To add, they have started digging holes under the garage and stairs as well. It's not fair, and it needs to stop. Secondly, reds are damaging our cars. Did you know the reds love to chew on wires? They get into our car engines and bite the wires, causing serious and expensive damage. Some of our neighbors have had to spend hundreds of dollars fixing their cars because of this, including myself. It's not just an inconvenience, it's a financial burden. Finally, reds are running around our streets, and it's frightening. You might have seen them scurrying around at night, but now they are even out during the day. This makes it unsafe for our kids to play outside, and for us to walk around without worrying about stepping on or being chasing by a red. These creatures carry disease, and having them so close to our homes is a high risk we shouldn't have to deal with. It's clear that this red problem is out of control. That's why I'm asking to city to step in. We need more pest control measures, and perhaps even community cleanup days to make sure we are not providing food and shelter for these pets. I'm also asking you to let our town know about this issue, as not everyone knows. By working together with the city, we can make our neighborhood a safe and more pleasant place to live. Thank you for listening, and let's talk, let's take action to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bozina?
Good evening. My name is Bozina, I go by Thea Petrovich. I live at 181 Hawthorne Avenue. We have lived in Wooddale for 35 years, and never had the problem with rats. I would like the city to come up with a plan to fight the problem. I guess you already have a plan, but here are some suggestions, and I'm probably going to be repeating what my neighbors are saying. Some suggestions include a note in the Waterville to all the residents stating that there is a problem with the rats. Specifically, making sure to place all garbage in the closed garbage containers. Rats are chewing through the garbage cans, so if you see a hole in your can, call the city and see if there's a program that they can exchange it for a new one. If you have a shed or a wood pile that is sitting on the ground without any concrete, it should be removed, because the rats make tunnels under them, eventually eating through the floor and living in the sheds. Also, you could state, please remove any food source in your yard, including pet food, bird seed, et cetera. And lastly, set traps out of children and pets' reach. Thank you to the city council for listening.
Thank you. And just so you know, there'll be something going out in the city newsletter. If anybody wants more information on the program for the residents, call Public Works, but it's...
But what we know, if the city sends some information to...
It'll be in upcoming newsletter. We'll have something in there. Honestly, the program is, we just passed it, I think, two weeks ago.
Some people doesn't know. Why they see the tickle headers? Because little headers, people just throw it in the trash and they don't read. It's scary right now. They change it by the street everywhere right now, not only A.
So, I would contact the Public Works, and we can start, because this weekend, right, tomorrow you said, they're gonna be laying them out in the alleys, but not at people's homes, and that's a cost-share program, so...
Because we, the traps we buying, they work sometimes. The reds are very smart, you know? So, they, we watch them, how they try to get the trap, they trip the trap, they get the food, and they get away. So, they are very smart, and we bought those boxes in Menards, nobody went there, we bought the plastic jaws, nothing.
Hold on, if you guys want to say something, I have to send you over there again, I'm sorry. So, you'll give him a call. All right, thank you.
Thanks, yeah. At least everybody knows what's going on.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so I think you alluded to this, but are we gonna do something like we did with the Skunk Program?
Yeah, I believe that's what we passed. Mr. Lang, could you give a little information on that? I don't think it's completely finalized, but we didn't even roll it out yet. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, we're starting a kind of a multi-tiered approach to rat mitigation. First is setting of traps along the public alleyway north of Irving Park Road, and off of Division Street there, by some of those restaurants. Another is increased enforcement of our property maintenance program, to make sure that businesses are adequately concealing their trash and have their own programs in place. And then the third is the cost-share program with residents, that is gonna be similar to the Skunk Program. That information will all be forthcoming, we'll be sure to advertise that as best we can, and we'll be sure to put the information on our website as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, no other written communications under Mayor's report? Do you have this for tomorrow? Okay. So, I have nothing, we'll go to Mr. Murmas for the manager's report.
Three items tonight, all special event related. First, we have a concert slash car show tomorrow evening that begins at 5:00 with the car show, and the concert at 7:30. So, please pack a picnic and some lawn chairs and come for this free outdoor evening in Wooddale. The second, second item will be the Public, it's on, the Public Works Open House will be held Thursday, June 13th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at our Public Works facility. You could discover some of the work that goes on behind the scenes while having fun with your whole family. The open house offers food, games, touch-a-truck, and some more fun things for the family, and parking, and activities are all located at the 790 Central Public Works Building. And the last item is the Megapasses Return to Prairie Fest. The city's excited to share that Megapasses have returned for Prairie Fest 2024, which takes place June 27th through the 30th. Megapasses will be available starting June 10th for purchase at City Hall and at the Wooddale Park District, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, if no objections, we have two items on the consent agenda. I got these two right here. Do we have any objections? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to to approve the two items. There are second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, I need a motion to approve the two items, approve, approval of executive session minutes from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and item B, or second item, approval of executive session minutes from May second, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Currielli.
Uh, yes, Mayor. The committee has four resolutions for consideration. The first is a resolution approving change orders numbers one, two, and three to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Pacific Construction Services LLC for the Police Department City Hall interior renovation project in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. I'll make the motion approved.
Second, that. Okay, we have a motion. Second, any questions on this? This is, all right, Alderman Woods?
I was out of town, so I was unavailable to discuss this. So I, I don't have any problem with the resolutions itself. My question's gonna pertain more to how we're handling paying for that, being that there is a contingency in the contract originally, and I, if I'm reading through this, we're not taking that out of the contingency, or we are taking it out of-
Chief.
Uh, right now, we're asking not to take it out of the contingency due to the fact that it's outside the original scope of the project, that the lobby was added in as a option. And all of these items relate to those significant water and mold damage that we found. I guess you could do it either way. You can take it now, or you can take it out of the contingency and do it later if we need more.
Follow-up, go ahead, Alderman Woods.
I mean, that's literally the, the concept of the contingency, right? Nobody planned for this, so I personally would like to take it out of the contingency. One way or another, we're gonna spend the money. But, you know, on one of the prior projects, we get to the end and we go, we saved all this money. Well, no, because we didn't use, take the money out of the contingency.
Chief, do you wanna make a comment? Otherwise, I was gonna ask a question.
Yeah, our, our thought process was because this would be about twenty percent of the contingency. We're trying to keep the smaller items out of the contingency instead of coming to council with, with those smaller items. But like you said, you can, different ways to skin it, you can do it either way.
And again, I don't-
Hold on, Alderman Woods?
I'm sorry, you know me, I get, oh, carry it with you.
Well, I can make a comment, because I asked those, some of those same questions.
Yeah.
And he's, he has other smaller items already that he knows he's bringing to us, which you should've just said that, because it would save us back and forth. Because you already know you're gonna, he's gonna use that contingency for these small items, which he was starting to say. Go ahead, Chief.
Well, we're trying to use those instead of bringing them to you guys. We're trying to use the contingency for those smaller items.
That, I mean, it's one or the other, either now or later, it's, I guess. Alderman Woods, do you have follow-up?
That, that's the thing. It's a more accurate scorekeeping. We're under budget. Contingency's handling, at a certain point, we're gonna be over budget. We're talking about it now, so whether you come today or two days from today, I don't think anybody's, I don't have an issue with the things that you're asking for. That's what you need to run the police department, that's what you need, you know, whatever, you know, so it's just how we handle it.
Right. No, I, same question.
Otherwise, there's no purpose of having the contingency. We'll just make it whatever.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
But just for financing sake, the, the scope is outside of PD. Is that work, that work is not PD, that, correct? That's-
Go ahead, Chief.
So, so the first item is PD, it's the interior windows from the police department. Once we pulled down that wallpaper of the six areas that were touched that have exterior windows, five of them had significant water damage and mold around those windows.
So there's twenty windows. There was only five in the budget.
He walked me through it already. I, I know the answer. I just thought there was some other areas outside of PD that-
Item number-
Go ahead, Chief.
Change order number two is for the mold remediation that we had to do right away outside the PD in the lobby area once we took that wallpaper down.
That's what I was-
Follow, good.
That's what I was alluding to, in the rotunda area. That is not PD-related, so for good score-
But it is, if we took the wallpaper down.
Yeah. For good scorekeeping, I don't know, maybe that's a best practice for, question for, for Brad. I don't, I don't know if it's gonna impact his project if he's coming back, but-
Regardless, we could just take this, all out of contingency, and he'll be back in a few weeks for some of these smaller items he was, that he knows he's coming back to us for.
I don't want him to be on the hook if he's got stuff, and then all of a sudden people get wild, and they don't wanna give him the money he needs to get his job done, right? It's like me paying for my neighbor's house, like, that's not my house. Technically, that's his budget, right? So that's what we approved for his project for PD.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I would say, so the lobby and the hallway area was added as an alternate bid in the PD contract. So even though it is a lobby and rotunda, and technically not part of the police station, it's part of the scope of work under that particular contract.
It's an alternative.
Good, Alderman Messina.
Sorry. But as an alternative.
That was approved by the council.
No, we, we did-
It was approved.
Well, it was approved. We approved it. It was an alternative, but we approved it.
Right. But not the mold, the mold was unfounded, that we didn't expect to find mold, is my point, right? So now the scope and the cost is-
Gonna go up.
Dramatically, right, so.
We, we haven't, we-
I don't know how the score is kept, I guess if it's not a big deal. I just don't want PD to be affected if-
If he needs something.
If he needs something.
I, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna deny the chief.
I hope not.
But, you know, it's not, so-
We're about a week in, okay.
Whatever, whatever works best for you guys. Go ahead, Chief.
I'm fine doing it either way. Whatever direction the council wants to move forward, if they wanna move forward with taking this out of the contingency, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's, he's coming to us anyways. He knows it. They're finding other things. Unfortunately, there's other things happening.
We have a motion and a second, right?
We have a motion. Alderman Woods, you follow up?
I'll add that we take it out of the contingency to the motion. And I know he's gonna come back probably five or six times.
Right, okay, so we'd like that added, taken out of the contingency. Alderman Currielli, you made the motion, are you okay with that?
I'll agree.
Alderman Messina?
I don't. Someone else will second it. I, I don't agree with that.
About taken out of contingency? Okay, so that, what do we need? It's a new second there? Do I, I need another second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. With the amendment. Any other questions? Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Why not?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Second item, a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Bradford Systems for storage solutions and installation as part of the Police Department City Hall interior renovation project in amount not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. I'll make the motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this one? Alderman Woods?
So this is, for clarity, again, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, there, this is additional scope to the project.
Chief.
No, this was planned, part of this was budgeted for, not with Pacific, though. This was part of the overall scope of the entire project, but items that were approved as part of the CIP, and we need to come to the council to get those purchased.
But it's out-
Hold on. Oh, go ahead, Chief, finish up.
So initially planned for this, these products needed for this project was just under eighty-five thousand dollars in our overall budget for the storage solutions. For the new women's locker room, the lockers themselves, the storage solutions for the evidence vault, storage solutions for PMI and records as well, and for duty bag storage for the officers. During the planning of this, those numbers have gone up due to inflation, and we were also presented a mobile evidence storage option that would add sixteen thousand dollars to that overall cost, which we did not budget for.
Alderman Woods, follow up?
Right, so, again, just so I'm clear, I'm okay with what you're spending and what you're buying. But it's, part of it, maybe it's a Brad question, as he stares at me.
Eighty-five thousand.
So part of eighty-five thousand was-
Budgeted.
In, so when we say budgeted, it was outside this contract, and it was budgeted as part of the CIP-
Who wants to take that? Mr. Wilson?
What he, that's correct, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. That's what I want. That's what I thought. All right, I'm good.
Alderman Messina, you have a follow-up on that? Go ahead.
Well, I asked about this as well, and I think it's important to know, because I heard mold, but I'm like, that doesn't sound good for an evidence room. Like somebody mobily moving it out, but just to be clear, it's, I know we walked through this, but it's literally in the ground, and it's just moved around and not leaving the premises, so I'm very comfortable with what you guys are doing. And it'll give us, as you said, more, more storage space, right? So.
Yes. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
Uh, item three is a resolution approving addendum number two to the existing agreement with FGMA Architects for architectural services for the Wooddale Police Department City Hall Interior Renovation Project in the city of Wooddale in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars, pending final attorney review. I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions on this one? Alderman Woods, I know.
I'm always the-
Can't go on vacation anymore, man.
Yeah. So, look, looking at the fee, so if I make the calculation, we're, we're kinda inferring that this project is seven, seventy-eight-hundred-thousand potential project?
Oh, I, I'd say that. Chief?
I don't wanna venture to guess yet at this point. We hope to bring those numbers to the council later in July, when we have some accurate numbers.
Yeah, I'll just go on the record saying that I said we should go with the second floor and do it right, because I had a feeling this was gonna happen, and this project's gonna go up. Do we have follow-up on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda where this is going. It's not about spending some extra money. You know, if that's what you need for the police department, that's what you need. But at a certain point, there's throwing good money after bad money, and this isn't the end-all, cure-all for the building in general. We've had this conversation, right? The mayor just alluded to the, the second floor, of which we said, oh, that's gonna cost millions more. Well, welcome to the conversation. Three-quarters of a million, we're, we're almost there. So if we're having a thought process, maybe we stall this if it's conceivable to do that, right? I mean, I know the Iran issues, there was a molding A led to B, B led to C, and then let's cure some other things with that. But if that's the conversation, maybe the conversation, especially since this thing's been phased out anyway, right? The police department remodel is being done over a few phases. This isn't the end-all, cure-all.
Yeah, well, I think it was over two fiscal periods, three? I thought it was over two fiscal years, right.
So, does it behoove us to look at a bigger picture if we're gonna start doing change orders or addendums, whatever you wanna call them, for three-quarters of a million dollars?
Well, when this first started, I just happened to pop in, and I was talking to the chief, and he goes, well, you know, I, I think, you know, we're thinking maybe a hundred thousand more, two hundred, maybe. He, I started laughing. I knew this, and talking to him the other day, so we're finding some other things, and, you know, we've had this building tested. I asked, I go, so if it's over there on that side, what about the other side? As long as we don't touch the wallpaper, open any windows. I didn't get a clear answer on that stuff, but I knew this was gonna happen, and that's why I said we should spend the money and do it right. And this is gonna be, I don't know, maybe we should take a pause and, and figure out what it would cost to do it right, because honestly-
Or at least have another conversation. It doesn't have to be a hard stop and go, but I think it warrants another look at it, another, you know, conversation about, does it make sense to, you know? At a certain point, I'm not seeing the value that we're gonna get for three-quarters of a million dollars.
Chief?
Well, again, this item is strictly related to the lobby options and doing a new vestibule, and the plan is to present a couple different options for that with different costs. Um, as far as pausing the PD portion of the project, I think we are beyond-
No, I've got, again, so I'm clear.
Yeah, no, no, we understand.
This, we, we approved the other thing, we wanna move forward with that, so don't think-
Right.
But this is outside that scope, and if we're gonna get that robust, then why don't we add, you know, what do we get for two million dollars more? What can we?
Yeah, I, honestly, I, especially after we changed, had to change the wall out there a year and a half ago downstairs and, and whatever. Go ahead, Chief.
So we, we ran into these lobby issues. We asked the architect to begin this process, because we knew we needed options to fix this. The initial plan was to possibly take those fees from the contingency. Due to the scope of it, again, it got to a certain percentage. We felt we should bring it forward. They're basically done with their design options, and to the point where we're getting pricing, hoping to present the council with different options to go forward. And if, if the council says we wanna keep the revolving doors and not do anything with the skylights, and just insulate it the best we can and hope for the best, that'll be an option.
It's, it's just putting, what's the term, putting lipstick on the pig? It's still garbage. Alderman Woods?
So, did you just say that the, the architect firm has already developed three options?
Chief?
Mike, I think it's two or three.
We've got Mike Elliott here with FGMA Architects.
So right now, as far as the options go, and, and working with, with the chief and the group, would be to one, look at the, the lobby space in removing the revolving doors, and actually then a corrective measure to re-insulate the steel and things like that, and go back to the cause to eliminate the mold coming through. It was really, well, we found a condensation issue coming through the building. So the one is to rectify that as far as with the work. The options got into, the one is, like, with, with the base option, let me stop, the base option would be to leave the, the product was called Calwall, when I referenced it. So the translucent panel that goes up the walls, or on the skylight and down. So we'd be leaving that in place. The second option would be to take out the skylight piece and replace that, because if you notice, it's yellowed and things like that. So, so the one option was to replace that. The next option was to actually remove all the Calwall, and then seal in the lid, and then put in new storefront or window, basically into the, the wall panels. But also then with, with redoing the vestibule piece, so we'd actually be putting a structure to the outside towards the parking lot. It opened up, reworking the sunken plaza, which, you know, appears to have some utility issues and some of the cracking and this and that, so that scope was actually relooking at that and putting that together as part of the entry. So those are all the options that were developed and put that together, so then we can get it in the hands of Pacific Construction, so we can get some real prices to bring forward.
Follow-up?
Go ahead, follow.
So did we relit, relay that information to Pacific already, or?
Okay, so that package is actually in the Pacific's hands right now, and they're developing their bids layout in this fashion, so then you can see the different cost options as we go forward.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
At, at some point, then we're gonna come back with three options and three prices?
Yes.
Similar to what you just said?
Yes. Yes.
So, at this point, and I'm not...
Go ahead.
Trying to chisel or anything, am I paying you eighty-nine thousand dollars, or, you know, if we pick, you're coming with option A, B, and C, so if we pick C, you then have to draw it, get the mechanical guys, the engineers, and do all that work?
So, to this point, to get to the point, we had to develop the documents for all three options, so they could give us the pricing on all three options.
Yeah, question, you just mentioned Pacific, so we just went to Pacific, and nobody else? Is it, are the only ones going to bid now?
Well, there it is.
Go ahead, Chief.
If they did, they were awarded the contract as the general contractor, and we have done a initial addendum.
Oh, okay, because...
With them for the City Hall corridor.
Right, right, okay.
And lobby, and so...
Right, right, okay. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
You guys have developed all the documents and specifications, gave that, but that's not complete. Whatever we pick, you have to do more work on, correct?
No, we've completed the scope drawings for the bids to be created.
So, is that the eighty-nine thousand that we're proving tonight?
Correct.
So, it's really worked, it's already done?
Correct.
Okay. Done. I don't know what I can say, but yes, can't not pay the guy.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alder Woman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Item four, a resolution approving change order number eight to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Pacific Construction Services LLC for the police department City Hall interior renovation project in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Motion and second. Questions on this one? Alderman Artie Woods.
I already talked through most of it with you. One thing I missed when we talked was the twenty additional cameras. Can you comment what those are, where they're going? Is that City Hall or is that police-specific, or...
Yeah, this would be just for the installation, to use the same data provider to install the cameras. It's not for the purchase of the cameras. The purchase of the cameras, some of that is budgeted for through the initial CIP, not with Pacific, and some of it is through a separate CIP that we had passed through for cameras throughout the city, expanding the cameras here at City Hall and the police department, looking at public works facilities that we felt needed video surveillance. So, it's not the camera themselves, just the installation cost.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
Is twenty new cameras that did not exist before, correct?
Chief?
No, this is...
That's the way it was worded.
This is a total of installing twenty cameras here at City Hall. I'd have to go back and count how many existing ones we have here. It's not adding twenty new cameras to the existing cameras.
Follow-up?
Okay. What I read is as six were coming down but being reinstalled, and then twenty more were being added on as part of the seventy-eight thousand one ninety... Again, I'm fine with that, I just didn't know if it was twenty new cameras, and they're all over City Hall, or just inside the PD, or what they...
Go ahead, Chief.
They are, they are new, they are going to be new cameras, but a lot of the old cameras are outdated, at end of their useful life. We're constantly putting in service requests to get them fixed and repaired.
So, the question is, how many were existing, and how many are actually new?
How many are new that we...
New positions, per se.
I think we're...
Mr. Stenson? You know that? Maybe you know that answer? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, we determined we're going to add a couple new cameras, one to the finance counter, one to community development. We're also going to add one to the two corners covering the parking lots with mailbox, and then one that's going to cover Wooddale Road as well.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's what I was asking, thank you.
Alderman Artie Woods, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, because I'm just trying to follow along. What, what happened to change order number seven?
So, number five, I'm sorry, number one, two, and three we brought earlier tonight.
Robert, yep.
Number four, number five were items that we were going to use out of the contingency, because they were all our mouths, and not to take straight to council. Number six is a fire alarm panel that's pending, that we're still working on, and number seven is for wireless access points that we're also going to come out of the contingency and not be taken to council.
So, but since we're taking this out of contingency, those other ones will be coming up to us when, next week or the week after? What, Chief?
Well, I guess, I need some direction from the council if they want me to bring any items forward until the contingency is exhausted.
Mr. Mermis?
I think the decision tonight was exhaust the contingency funds, so we'll go back, huddle as staff tomorrow, see where we're at with the calculations, and then possibly come forward with these after we exhaust all the funds in short order.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Just to be fair, I'm okay if you guys come back and say you want to increase the contingency. I just don't see the sense of having one and not using it, and then you create these outside. I just want to keep score, and know when we're going over budget, and there's one straight line to get to where we're going, right? If we have to do the work, we have to do the work.
Right.
It's that simple. I just, I just want to know what it is and make it easy to follow along.
And I know the manager's been whispering in my ears, "Mayor, that's too expensive doing the building." Just, I get it, but we've got problems. They need to be taken care of. Band-aids never work. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alder Woman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. That ends the committee's reports, Mayor. Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Artie Woods.
I have three reports, Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion, but an amended motion, if that's possible, for a resolution updating the city of Wooddale's rear yard drainage assistance program policy, but I'd like to remove the line that the city shall have the sole discretion to select the contractor to perform the work. I'd like the resident to be able to select the contractor and have the final say.
I'll second that. If that's a motion, I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, but honestly, I had some questions on that myself before we get started. Right, so, the city's going to start having the engineer and picking the contractor. Let's see here, let me start at the beginning. Rear yards, we're soliciting the contractors. It's over, if it's over ten thousand, we have to pay everything, so, when I, we sat here, wait, hold on, let me get this out, because this is confusing to me. I heard, when we did this, we were first going to go from three thousand to seven thousand, or seven, whatever the motion was, then we decided to go to ten thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars upfront, we pay the first ten thousand, and, so, before we start the project, if it's thirteen thousand, if the people then have the three thousand before, or, is what the city now going to become the collection agency for the three thousand? Or are we getting that money first? Because it doesn't sound like we're getting the money first. I'm a little confused. Mr. Lang?
So, the discussion at the committee, there was some concern with the resident being able to come up with the full amount upfront, the thirteen thousand, so, in order to mitigate that, the city's proposing to solicit proposals, select a preferred contractor, similar to what we do for the grass cutting and the snow plowing program, and then the contractor would perform the work, and then invoice the city, who would then pay the contractor in full, and then invoice the resident for anything over ten thousand dollars. And legal put together an agreement between the resident, the contractor, and the city, which would stipulate any recourse if the resident were to not pay back the city.
Okay, well, so, I was reading this, right, and some of these projects could be fifteen thousand, that's the reason we went to the ten thousand or whatever, and city pays the fifteen thousand, we've told the resident, hey, it's going to be fifteen thousand, city's paying ten, okay, they say, and then, oh, I really don't have the money. Should we be getting the five thousand first? Mr. Bond, I'd love to hear this.
Sure, and one of the reasons that we made it a three-party agreement is for that very reason. Now, if the property owner says, "I can't, I don't have it, I won't have it, and it's a fifteen thousand dollar cost..."
Well, it would be five thousand to them.
Well, the total project, and then five thousand, which would be the residence, I think they probably wouldn't proceed with it. It's, I think that the cost, depending on, you know, it's going to be site-specific, and we see change orders here and so forth, but, so, the thought was that a lot of these will be able to be done within, close within that ten thousand range, but in the event the resident fails to, we're not going to become a collection agency if they don't make a timely reimbursement. They agree, by signing the agreement, they agree to have a lien placed on their property for that amount, and then they're going to pay the cost of recording a lien, the cost of releasing a lien when they do ultimately make that payment. It's a cloud on title if they don't...
And that's where I was getting to, so now the city's going to start putting liens on people's properties, and you know what? I'm going to live there until I die, and you can lien that property all you want, I don't care after that, but I don't know. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, and there is a provision, it's not recommended, but there is a provision for the city to foreclose on that lien, much like a mortgage company would, if they wish to, and actually having the lien placed on their, their property could be a violation of their mortgage, which could prompt the lender to initiate a foreclosure, so that would be really a last resort.
Alderman Woods?
I, I know that we do the grass cutting and the snow removal, and that's a contract. It's a little different.
It's a little, little cheaper.
Did vote for it, but I don't want to get into the contracting business, getting, putting liens on property.
Right.
The, the resident, I would, I would hope would work for the best deal and get the best price they could get. I know that there's been an argument that it's too cumbersome, they, to get it, well, then, then don't do the project. I mean, we're offering you a great program, you know, if you don't have enough gumption, energy, or whatever, to get a couple estimates and get the job done, and work in your own best interest to get it done as economically as possible, right? My goal would be to find a guy that can do it under the ten thousand, or the closest to the ten thousand.
And honestly, I don't have a problem if this, if the city also bid the project or whatever contractor we had, and the residents, two contractors, or whatever, right, they have to have two, correct? Or just one?
Uh, three.
I thought we changed from three. Didn't we change from three?
That was the facade program. We accept, we require three typically, if they only can find two, if they put a good faith effort into looking for other proposals and they can't get it, we'll take the lowest of the two.
Right. Mr. Bond? I see you're anxious.
Yeah, I mean, and again, this is a, it's unique where the city's going to, you know, assist, and it, you know, there is some drainage issues, assist the private property owners, but in order to protect the city's interests, we had discussions among the staff as to, one, you don't want to get some fly-by-night or the cheapest guy out there who can do it by having a contractor that the city has vetted, and then, one, they're not going to be significantly different in terms of what they're doing in these rear yards, so, by having that contractor, knowing that they will have the ability or the possibility of getting business from X number of property owners, it's going to contain the cost of that, on the one hand, you're going to get a qualified contractor who's going to be doing it, and we're not going to get, you know, somebody's brother who came in and did it, and he says, yeah, it's, it's twenty thousand dollars, give me ten, cost them nothing.
I will argue a little bit that sometimes the city doesn't get the best price, because they're the city, we'll just charge them.
Exactly.
I, that, you know, I'm a little hesitant on that, but we still on this subject? Otherwise, I've got a couple other ones. Alderman Woods?
Same, same, same subject. I, I still say that it's up to the homeowner to get the work done on their home. Obviously, the contractor has to be qualified, right?
Has to be registered with the city.
Have insurance, has to, and again, I would hope the homeowner vets the guy and gets their referral, or does some of that stuff. Mr. Lang is chomping at...
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
So, the way the program is written, the resident still has the option to seek their own contractor, they just would still need to get the three proposals. I think it's important to remember that we're spending taxpayer funds here on private property, so we have to do our due diligence to make sure that the city's getting qualified proposals...
And there's still a requirement. I'll go Alderman Artie Woods first, before I keep going.
Yeah, so, I was going to say, the verbiage in here is great, and I understand the concerns about the money after the fact, and the liens on the property and everything, but that's why I said I just want to strike the whole, the city has the sole discretion to pick it. I like that the city has our own contractor, but the resident can get two or three bids, and if they're coming in, you know, if the city's contractor wants fifteen, and the private contractor wants eleven, why would they not have the option to make the final decision? Why are we making the final?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, I just think that language is included to protect the city, as it is the city's money that we're giving up to these contractors here, and we don't want somebody's, you know, brother-in-law who will do it for X amount to not go through the competitive process to...
But we're inspecting the project. I would imagine our engineer is making sure that what they're doing, that's what they have to do, so they can't be cutting corners.
Correct.
I just, just... Go ahead, follow-up?
Yeah, I think there was language too, that the resident could actually do it themselves and still get reimbursed, right, if it's their own property?
For materials, correct.
Right, exactly, not for labor, so that kind of, if I have my brother-in-law come over and do, I mean, it's kind of built into the language too.
So, when we got the program eligibility, we got rid of the seventy-two hours and some of that stuff, and I'm looking nuisance flooding, including standing water saturation, overland flooding, which causes direct damage to the house, multiple residents, homeowners impacted. But again, the sun pump, you've got it up at the top, why wouldn't, why wouldn't the sun pump be as eligible? I thought that was being added, or it's been added, that's rear yard drains, sun pump discharge line.
Right.
Will connect to private stormwater systems, preferred project. Why isn't it in the eligible projects still? Or I'm just curious, is this a legal thing?
No, the guidelines of the program have not changed. All, the same project types are still eligible, the requirements for what qualifies the projects are still all applicable from when the previous program. The only thing that changed really is the application fee, the amount of the city's contribution, and this process for the city selecting a preferred contractor.
And I asked this before, this nuisance flooding, Mr. Bond wasn't here at the time, and I didn't want to call him, I didn't want him to give me a prepared statement. So, what is nuisance? So, I can have you guys come and do, because I don't like that river in my backyard, so I get ten grand, I tell my neighbors, and we all, when you guys put in a nice line for us, ten grand each, we won't have to touch a thing. Is that nuisance, because it's, they're going through the swale? That's not...
So, there's still a requirement that they submit?
Wait, wait, I want the legal on this one. Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
And nuisance is designated as a public nuisance, that's what you're referring to as an annoyance, which is not a legally recognizable condition, what, it would, there's got to be some impact on the larger part of it, like when, if you had pigeons, not racing pigeons on your property, and they're, you know, doing their business on the neighboring property, that's a nuisance, because it's spread from that particular property and has an impact on the other properties. Same thing with some of the houses that we've had to move toward demolition, where it's a nuisance, where that, that condition is impacting the surrounding properties.
So, if the property is wet two days later, and you know what? I don't like it. Is that a nuisance or an annoyance? It was kind of vague, I mean, we leave, it's kind of vague. Before, at least, we had the seventy-two hours, if we wanted to shrink it down to forty-eight hours or something, but now it's just nuisance, so, I'll have five lawyers tell me one thing, I have five lawyers tell me something else, and I don't want to get into arguments with residents, because, well, it's a nuisance, Nungio, and I'm going to say, well, the lawyer says no. It's not going to work. Tell me that.
Yeah, and the nuisance under that scenario would be, it becomes a haven for mosquitoes or for something, and that would be longer than, you know, just a couple of days where it's sitting there with water on it.
Okay, as long as we're really clear, Mr. Mermis is really anxious. Okay, as long as we're really clear. Mr. Murmice is really anxious. Go ahead.
I just wanted to go back to clarity on the city contractor portion, because I think that one of the main focuses the committee had was they wanted to make this affordable and readily accessible to the residents. So, legal had to draw up language, and this is where the city contractor came in, because under any other scenario, let's say they do choose to do this $10,000 project. Without that language that the city attorney put in, the resident would have to front the full $10,000. That's where that language came in. There's no other way around that to protect our investment. And I think you can provide some clarity on that. That's where that came from.
But they can use their own person, so let's say you have a relative in the business.
But they would have to front the whole amount.
My question is, if we know the amount, and we've got the bids, right, and let's say it's 13,000, shouldn't we be getting them 3,000 upfront before we start doing the work? I'm just curious. This is, this is a little different than $25 or $15 for grass and snow. 3,500, it could be 8,000, I don't know. It could be a big project. I mean, maybe we have a threshold for that. Alderman Woods? Oh, wait, Mr. Bond, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the answer to your question is yes. It should, we should get it upfront, but my understanding is you're going to have some of the, have that upfront to commence the project, but by the end, that they're going to be able to get, somehow come up with that, with that money. Otherwise, let the property, private property owner take care of all of the drainage on their private property.
Right, no, I, I just heard you saying, "Well, we'll put a lien on it, we can foreclose on it." And I can see it now, some seniors are going to be yelling at me because you're trying to foreclose on their property. I, I'm just trying, you know. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, and one of the reasons we put that, if they're able to front the money, and able to make the payment, this is, they're on notice when they sign it, that if they don't, these are the consequences. So, it's not as if the city sat back and they didn't do something, now the city's saying, "Well, now you didn't do it, here you go." But that was the only way. I mean, as Director Lang said, you're using public funds for this, for this project, and you're working on private property. So, if they end up, you know, injuring somebody's petunias or whatever, you've already got, all those types of things have to come into consideration, as opposed to somebody hiring their own, we just approved a permit. So, this way, it gives the, it gives the city some protection, and the property owner knows what the rules are moving, going into it, so they can say, "I don't have 3,000 now, and in three weeks or four weeks, I won't have 3,000. I can't do the project."
I just want to make sure we're protected, and I don't want to, I don't want to be arguing with residents and they're yelling at me for stuff that... Hi, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'm confused on a couple of things you said, but I'll start with, if the, it's only a two-day project. The guy doesn't have the 3,000. The week ahead of time, he's not going to have it.
The week after.
Later, you know. This is an ongoing thing, so if he's going to do it, then maybe he saves up the money. I think that they should have some skin in the game. I'm still not sold on the city being the contractor. I understand the...
No, no, but we're not the contractor.
Getting the guy in there, but I would leave it up to them. I don't want to be the... If they really want to do the project, they're going to get the project done. They'll get the money. They'll...
That's why I'm trying to say is, maybe we should get whatever it is above the $10,000 upfront, so we don't have to deal with all this other stuff, but that's just my opinion. Mr. Lang?
Part of the preferred contractor was to streamline the process for the residents, too. A lot of them have trouble getting quotes. They claim, you know, nobody will call them back, nobody will come out. So, we wanted to make the program as easy as possible for the resident.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
So, could we then give them this guy's name, or two guys' names?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
We do provide a list of all registered contractors that perform this type of work within the city, and they can pick any of them.
Okay, well, then I think, I think we did our job done. We, you know, if they can't take a list, get three guys to come out, yeah, might have to call five to get three guys come out. That's just where we're at today.
But they can still call their own.
Correct.
And, but, the only thing is, if that, their contractor's not registered with the city, they just have to pay the, whatever the $100, $200, whatever the registration fee is, and they, they would do the checks that their licenses are in good standing, correct? Mr. Bond?
Correct.
I would just feel more comfortable as, right, the project could take a week. If they don't have the 3,000 today, they might not have it, and then we got to start this process. And the big bad cities, they're being unfair to me, you know. Mr. Bond?
Well, to your other point, there is a provision, and the resident may select a city-approved contractor or seek a contractor, the resident's choice, to perform the work under the program. So, they have that option. The other part of the agreement is, you know, the resident, if they elect to proceed with the program, they're going to need to apply for the necessary permits. So, they'll know going into whether they want to move forward with it. They'll know that, what the cost is, and whether they want to move forward.
But I, I thought we were waiving the fees. I thought I read in here that we're waiving those permit fees and things like that. Is that not the case? Did I, are we, did I read that wrong? I'm like, because I got it here, it's like, we're waiving all fees.
We waive the, the permit fee for the resident. There is a deposit fee, I believe, for the permit.
Well, the $250 they pay upfront for the application.
Correct, yeah.
But, so if we're waiving the fees, what else is there?
I believe...
Mr. Lang? I don't know.
Director Springer can weigh in as well, but I believe there is a non-refundable permit deposit that is charged to the contractor, the resident, whoever comes and applies for the permit.
Mr. Bond?
And the, with respect to the fee, or I think you addressed?
Well, the fees. I read that... Hold on. Still, so the we, the fees are waived. Is that part of the 10,000, or? I, I'm, because the, I read fees have been waived, so I just want, I was wondering if that was part of the 10,000, or?
No, that's part of the permit process.
So, it's separate from the 10,000?
Correct.
So, we're waiving the permit fees?
Correct.
Mr. Bond, or, I've heard it both ways now, so I would just want to be clear.
Well, in terms of the, the $250?
No, no, that's the application.
That's the application fee. That's non-refundable.
That's, yeah, that's, in essence, to get the engineer to come out to the property, that covers the engineer's expenses. That's taken at the time of application. When the contractor goes to apply for a permit, there are additional fees. We waive some of those fees, so they don't get passed on to the resident.
But there is some kind of fee.
I believe, Director Springer wants to comment.
Alderman Woods?
Going back to the, paying the non-refundable fee to avail yourself of the program.
That's the application fee.
Application, so we're going to send the engineer, our engineer, out. He's going to look at the site. He's going to determine, A, that there's a need or issue, and then, B, is he going to do anything that says you need to go from point A to B to C? Is there going to be, like, just a stick-figure schematic?
Essentially, yes. So, if we are receiving multiple quotes, we can get, compare apples to apples, essentially.
So, what I'm trying to get to then is, now we have at least a, a simple scope of work that's required. So, everybody's going to be bidding the same thing of the contractors that are on the list that we give the people, so they can do their job, and again, us not be the contractors. And they're going to sign a deal with the contractor. If they pay him, they pay him. If they need a credit card, if they need to borrow from Uncle J, I don't care how they do it, that's up to them and their property. I mean, that's the way I, I see it.
The way I understand it is, the city's paying, and we're going to collect from the resident.
Under this scenario, I'm saying, I don't, I don't agree with that scenario.
The feedback we got from the committee at the April meeting was that there was concern that the resident wouldn't be able to come up with the money upfront. I'm perfectly fine with it working as a reimbursement.
Yeah, no, I am. We're not beating you up, but we're, I, I just, the way I'm, the way I'm reading it, I'm like, we're funding all the money. Mr. Bond?
Well, the alternative, if the, if the property owner finds their own contractor, and the contractor says, "It's $6,000, you got to pay me X number upfront," that, that's on the property owner. So, the reimbursement would take the, that initial burden of the property owner. But, if it's a two-day project, two more, two days from now, you may not have any more money than you had in the beginning. That's the, the risk by putting the city's money into resolving this, this problem in whatever regional area it's going to be. And that's why the protection is, we'll do it upfront, we'll front the contractor, or you pay it, and you front the, your own contractor. So, I thought that, my understanding, I wasn't at the committee, was that that was, the goal was to not put the residents, some of them couldn't come up with that money to front it, that we would end up doing that.
So, before, we had 50%, up to $3,000, so for a $6,000 project. But the, the thing was, well, there's projects that could be 10, 15, 20,000. And that's where we came up, I think we started with 7,000, we ended up at 10. Because the sump pump thing, that's, you know, in word three, I know a couple blocks over there, that people are all complaining, right? And there's a pipe that's 40, 50 years old that's collapsing everywhere, so those people want to hook up to the front. Well, it costs money, and it's not, it's not $6,000. So, that's why we're kind of, right, going to this extra question, and those are pumps, right? Yeah, so, just want to make sure the city's covered. If they get their own contractor, what they, are you saying that they have to front the money, and then we reimburse them? Because we're going to have a price ourselves, so we'll know if, if it's overpriced or not, right? Because we're going to say, "No, we're not going to pay the guy an X, 15,000, and our guy can do it for 11." Right, Mr. Bond?
Right, so that's what it would be. It would be a reimbursement. So, whatever the contractual arrangement between the property owner and the contractor they select, and I don't think you're going to find money, you'll say, "Well, I'll do it on the promise you're going to pay me." They'll take something upfront, so they would, we would reimburse them after they, they demonstrate that it was, it's been inspected, the work was completed, the work was completed pursuant to our code, and then we would reimburse the, the property owner.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, basically my point of just, everything, the way it's written is fine with me. Just removing the city have the sole discretion to select the contractor. So, in the scenario you're talking about, if I have a contractor come over to my house and say, "They'll do it for 12 grand." I'm going to cut the check for the 12 grand, and then get reimbursed 10 from the city. Or, if we do it with the city's contractor, which is still an option, and the city has the one contractor per year that in the verbiage here that says we're going to do, they want, you know, 18 grand, but I don't want to come up with any money, then I can, it's my right to select the guy for 18 grand, and I got to cut the extra $8,000 difference, but I don't have to front the full 18. So, the two options are still there, just removing that language that the city is the sole person to pick who's moving forward with.
Mr. Lang?
In that scenario, the city would select the lower proposal. So, I, I agree with you, yeah, but if the, the resident wants to seek multiple proposals, we will take the lowest.
Good, Alderman Arty Woods.
So, is there a situation where the, the city would not pick them, lower proposal?
No, as long as they're a qualified contractor to perform the work, the city will always select the lower proposal.
So, why would we commit?
Go ahead, Alderman Arty Woods.
Why would we commit to one vendor, then? That's what I don't understand.
We would get multiple bids also, right?
Yeah, we're satisfying basically the public bid requirement by soliciting proposals to select a preferred. We're trying to save the resident the hassle of getting three proposals. That was the only reasoning behind that. And to establish a relationship with the contractor where the city could pay them directly, instead of the resident having to front the money.
But this said, we're going to award the contract to one contractor per year. What does that mean?
Right.
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
As the city's preferred contractor, that's not, the resident still has the option of securing multiple proposals if they want to go with their own contractor. No, but the city's already done its due diligence to select a preferred contractor if the resident wants to streamline the process.
If that's the way it truly is, then I'm all for the original motion. If we go with the lowest cost, and it's, the resident can get their own contractor that the city approves, then I'm fine with that.
Wait, so, if we approve one contractor, we're only going to get one bid? Is that what we're saying? Mr. Bond?
That's what I thought, but it's...
Well, you're going to, I would hope we're getting more than one bid.
We're going to advertise it just like we do any other request for proposals.
Okay.
It'll be based on unit pricing for some common project types, and we'll select the lowest qualified contractor. But, the, the feedback we're getting from the council tonight, it sounds like we want to just stick with the original program, how it works. The resident seeks three proposals, the city approves it, and then the project is completed. The resident pays the contractor, and the city reimburses the first $10,000.
Again, as long as the city's protected, and we have our contractor bidding, making... So, in my situation, we've got a lot of family members do all kinds of construction work. I call them out, they're going to charge me some time and material. I'm going to save money. I'll probably be cheaper than your contractor. In that case, you guys save money. But, not everybody has that, right? So...
Right.
I just want to make, I want to make sure we're protected, and we're not, all of a sudden, we got to start doing all these liens, or, you know. It might have only be one or two a year, if even that. So, Mr. Bond?
Well, just so for transparency's sake, we're only protected to a certain point. We're, there's not complete protection. When the city's expending the money, advancing the money, we have to get that back from the property owner. If the property owner doesn't, the only recourse we have is to, you know, file a lien, we can enforce the lien, or we put something in the contract, which no property owner's going to sign. And that is, we can pursue them in circuit court, they pay attorney's fees for their cost of collection, and so on and so forth. So, this was a way of trying to accommodate what the, the purpose of the program was, to take care of some of these rear yard drainage issues that the council direction at, at the committee level, and do as much as could be done to protect the interests of the city. But there is still some exposure for somebody who doesn't pay. So, the only recourse, and they're agreeing to it, it sounds harsh, I get it, in terms of the lien, but that's the only way we have to protect it unless we have them put their money in, and we don't use city money.
All right, Oliver Messina, go ahead.
I think Pat said it more eloquently, but that's exactly, we're here at the committee meeting for this exact reason. Nobody's coming forward, right? We want to use it. So many people that want to do it, and then, I can sign up for W.A.R. If I don't pay the bill, you're going to lien my property. It's the same risk. So, what does it matter? The one, we don't, I wish, maybe we'll get one applicant a year, Nunez. We're not, we're not paying. I'm shocked. I'll be shocked if we get one person. The whole reason we talked about it, we're wasting his time. We're wasting taxpayer dollars. We told him, we gave him direction to go do all this stuff, and now we're backtracking. It's the same risk that if they stop paying my, if I stop paying my W.A.R. bill tomorrow, they're going to turn my water off, we're going to put a lien. Same thing here.
Right, W.A.R. bill.
Doomsday's going to come no matter what.
Water bill is $100, $200.
I know, but the doomsday stuff, this is the whole purpose of the program. I mean, we got, there's doomsday and risk.
I just want to make sure we're protected. What's the difference if they give us 3,000 upfront? Because the project's 13,000.
I'm just saying, I could pay $25 for the, the trapping of the animal, and I can catch a cat, right? I mean, it's the same risk, and I got to pay the bill, and I mean, this is ridiculous. The whole thing is, we're trying to help people. I mean, the doomsday stuff, we got to, we got to move forward. We gave, we wasted so much time if we backtrack. The whole idea is, so many people want to come forward.
I don't have a problem with the, I just want to make sure we're protected. That's it.
I know. I'm just saying, people are freaking out. They, they see the bill and what it costs. We're trying to make it more affordable so more people can take advantage, so we all could get less calls for these things done.
Alderman Woods? Do we have a motion, by the way?
Yeah.
We need a second.
Okay.
Couple things. So, one, I don't think we ever gave a direction to go hire one contractor to do all the jobs. So, that's, that's where my issue's at, and we haven't even covered the issues with that. So, the guy comes, bids the job, right, the city hires the contractor, goes through the process. Now, the $9,000 job becomes an $18,000 job, because they ran into issues. There was buried pipe, or electrical, or something nobody knew was there. They dinged my driveway, they, they hit the side of my house with their trencher, they did something, all the other liability. We made the program robust, so more people availed it, themselves to it, as Alderman Messina said. That's why we raised it to $10,000, to get more people to do it. But, to then take on all the liability, and like I said, we haven't covered all the issues that could happen with us being the contractor, or hiring the contractor, and what that's going to bring, because the people are then going to say, "Well, or if it's a, it was 11,000, I thought I was going to pay 1, then the bill goes up to 16,000. Well, I'm not paying it. It's your guy. He should have, he should have known." Now, we're part of that argument. That's, that's the thing I'm trying to, to resolve.
All right, Mr.?
We, if, if we give them the list, we do all the other things, I mean, I don't see why we're not covered and let them hire their own contractor.
Right, I mean, right here, Mr. Bond, resident may select to use city-approved contractor, seek a contract, resident's choice, to perform the approved work. Then he's got some other memo he's pointing to, but if the city attorney is fine, and you can use your own contractor.
Okay, so let's, let's move forward.
I have a last comment, exactly.
Alderman Messina?
You can use your own, but those that have had people approach me, I mean, I give them the list all the time. At the end of the day, it's the same people. I mean, you might as well say it's one person for that rear yard drainage. I won't even say the name of landscaper. Inherently, he just wins them all, because he knows. But, to protect us, I also know that if they, he did even a project for me, it's $2,400. If he comes and submits a bid to you for 20,000 for something similar, you're going to start to see, you're going to see an anomaly, like, "Why the heck did they do Randy's house for X, and this guy for this?" Right? So, there is some benefit. I understand the risk that Alderman Woods is saying, but we've covered that risk. The inherent benefit is, we at least have a pattern. We know blah, blah, blah landscaping does this job, and this is what it costs. I mean, you guys are not just...
The, the question is, which Alderman Woods just brought up. So, we paid the first $10,000, and, right, they're trenching, they ding the siding on the house or something. Who's paying the extra $5,000? Are we protected from that? That's, that's my biggest concern. Are we protected? Mr. Bond?
Yeah, so if you did that scenario where they would hire the city, they, they say, "We're going to select the city-approved contractor," then they would have their insurance, they would have, we'd have an acc... would have, we'd have a contract with that, with that contractor so that if something did happen, and that's a concern that was raised, is, you know, what happens? Because if we do, we're taking responsibility for mistakes, errors, damage, property caused by the contractor. But if we have a contract and we make them provide like we do with any other project, they do a project at City Hall or Public Works facility, they ding a power line or something else, the contractor's going to be responsible for it. So that's the protection the city has under that scenario. And if the private property owner has their own and one of your in-laws or relatives...
They do good work.
One of the distant cousins do not so good work and they, then that contractor's responsible for it. So that's how you, so we don't expose ourselves to any additional liability by doing that. The benefit of the city-approved contractor is you already got a unit price. You already know what that's going to cost essentially to do that project, you know, site conditions aside. You may have some additional, but...
All right, well, we have a motion, second. Go ahead.
But so the damage piece, I'm good with. That's pretty cut and dry contractual obligations and all that. The scope creep, the things that happen that we don't know about when we go to tie into the sewer, that we got to go 10 feet or get under something, you go through something, or there's some issues, because we don't know those, right? That's what I'm saying. So we're, we're taking part in that because we have control of the contractor, at least that's the perception of the resident, right? I have the good faith, and they'll love it because they have the good faith of the contractor, they have the good faith of the city working with it. I'm just looking at it and going, there's multiple issues that could pop up where this goes bad and I don't want to be the guy that's foreclosing in houses, placing more liens, or arguing going, "You got me a bad guy, he should have known this. They should have known that the job's going to be 18,000, not 10,000." That's my concern. So I voted to raise it. I want to help the residents, I want to get them there. I'm just, that's my concern, that's my worry.
Mr. Bond?
I won't ask any more questions, so we can...
And that's a legitimate concern and we just saw an example of it. The chief's not in the back row, but, you know, where they saw the mold on the windows, which on a 34-year-old building or whatever it's been, you know, there are, there are situations and you've seen that on change orders where they come before you on city-owned properties and projects where there's a change order because of some site condition that was unanticipated. So the hope is those will be minimal, but you can't, you know, protect against those. But you're right, that would be a additional cost.
So is that something that's going to, the residents are going to know upfront saying, "Listen, this is the project, but if things come up, it's going to be your responsibility?" I mean, it's going to be told to them?
I don't know. I just, I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
It's out there.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, it would be under the scope, but again, it's going to say unforeseen conditions and we all are optimistic. We'll think, well, my property doesn't have any unforeseen conditions, so I'm good with that.
I know.
But it is a possibility and they'll be made aware of that, although some of them may choose to ignore that.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Can we clarify the motion again? Because the original piece was...
Yeah, my motion was as written, but with the removal of the city having the sole discretion to select the contractor, so...
But we never had that though, right?
No, that was the original motion he made, but I think that if I'm, if I'm correct, that Director Lang...
Saying we don't need that.
Said that that's not so. We're going to take the lowest responsible bidder.
Correct, yeah.
Is that the...
My thing is if the city's out, if the city's out the 10 grand anyway, so if your guy comes in at 14 and, you know, my cousin Bill comes in at 10 even, the city's still out 10 regardless.
Your cousin Andy.
So that's why I said that. But if you're saying that ultimately we're going with the lowest price responsible bidder...
Yeah, if you want to add that the city will select the lowest qualified contractor, I'm fine with that language.
I'm good with amending the motion.
Are you okay with that? Donnie?
I'm good too.
Second, okay? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Throw a roll call.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
All right, that passes.
I'd second approval of final payment to Franzen Plumbing Incorporated for the Public Works Trench Drain Replacement Project in the amount of $35,817.62. That is my motion.
Second. You have a motion, a second. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
That passes.
Finally, a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and RJN Group for the Addison Road Water Main Replacement Project Professional Services in an amount not to exceed $37,000 even. That is my motion.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
That passes.
And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderwoman Ames.
I have one report, Mayor. A resolution authorizing an agreement between the city